It's Monday, July 13th at 7:03 PM, and we are in regular special session tonight, excuse me. And our first item of business is to establish a quorum, and all members of council are present. We will have ordinances for first reading tonight. And before I do that, I would like to note that we did host the agenda for this meeting last Friday. And we are working through the Zoom, thanks to our government channel help, our staff. We did notice from the Friday session with over 100 people and people asking question and answers, it's much easier for us if you will use the chat box feature if you are a participant tonight wanting to make a comment or to ask a question. And we will have the usual where we'll read through the ordinance, and then we will have discussion amongst council members and the mayor, and then we will open it up for comments and questions. So have no fear, it might take us a little while, but we will get to comments and questions tonight as well. So ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 8420 is an ordinance implementing a requirement where face coverings in any public space to limit the spread of COVID-19, amending Athens City Code Title IX, General Regulations, Chapter 9.11, Sanitation and Health, to add Section 9.1110, Face Coverings in Public Spaces, and declaring this ordinance as an emergency measure. This is introduced by all members of council. And Councilmember Grace, I believe you have some information for us tonight.
I do. Thank you, President. Thank you all for bearing with me here. We do have, or I would like to make a motion to make a few amendments to even what was just recently posted on our draft. The clerk of council and our law director and President Nisley and I have all been very carefully monitoring all the information we can find and doing research. And so I will introduce this as a single amendment to our draft ordinance. And so I will go through in order what the changes are. And please feel free to ask questions once. I'll try to be as clear as I can. And hopefully, everyone has this draft to be able to follow along here. Okay, so the first change comes in our list of exemptions, which is B1. So the requirement to wear a face covering through this ordinance does not apply to the following. And then my amendment would strike the first paragraph and insert this language instead. A medical condition, including those with respiratory conditions that restrict breathing, mental health conditions, or disability contraindicates that wearing of a facial covering. The individual is communicating or seeking to communicate with someone who is hearing impaired or has another disability where the ability to see the mouth is essential for communication. So strike paragraph subsection 1 and insert the language that I just read. I would also insert at the end of the list. We currently have 12 exemptions listed. I would list 13, which is an individual who is an officiant of a religious service.
So we do have a motion to amend. That's the language of your two amendments. Do we have a second so that we can begin discussion?
Hold on a second.
Councilmember Fall seconds it.
There is one other.
I'm sorry.
With that addition, sorry, of the event, we add individual as an officiant of a religious service. And then in the definitions, the very last clause that says, but excluding religious facilities, we will strike that clause.
All right. So we have a motion and second for amending this. And we should take a vote on amending at this point. So and... Well, you have some... What do you have? Comments and discussion? Let's open it up for discussion first. Yes. Councilmember Reisner.
Part 13, religious what? I can't quite follow, hear that word.
The addition, that language that's added?
Yes.
Okay, so the item 13, it would be an officiant of a religious service.
I don't know what that means.
The pastor or preacher or whoever is leading their religious congregation. Or officiating at a religious service.
Ah, now I see the connection. Sorry for being so ignorant.
No. No problem. It's good for clarity.
It's not a word that's used very often.
No, not.
Okay, and we, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. Councilmember Grace, I believe the language that you read will completely replace B1. Is that correct?
Correct.
And I apologize for also being rather slow. But do you read, since I don't have it in front of me?
Yes, I apologize for not getting it ready sooner.
That's okay. Would you mind reading it again now that I have the proper place in front of me?
Sure. Yes. Okay, so the requirement to wear a facial covering through this ordinance does not apply to the following. An individual with a medical condition, including those with respiratory conditions that restrict breathing, mental health conditions, or disability contraindicates the wearing of a facial covering. The individual is communicating or seeking to communicate with someone who is hearing impaired or has another disability where the ability to see the mouth is essential for communication.
Councilmember Smedley.
I'm sorry. Before I go, did Member Crowell have a question about that?
Yeah, can I ask some questions now about that? Okay, so to make clear, what has been removed is that an individual is not required to produce medical documentation of the condition or disability. And also then the subsequent, an employer may require such documentation from an employee. Is that correct?
That is correct. That language was removed because it was not included in state orders, partly because both of those issues are covered thoroughly under state and federal law. So it would be a violation of privacy, probably HIPAA and ADA, to ask. So that's already well established that they do not have to provide documentation. So we don't need to spell that out in our ordinance. And also that employers may ask for that documentation. It is already established. I'm like looking around on my screen.
That clarifies for me. Thank you, Councilmember Grace.
Okay, sure. Thank you. Member Crowell.
And Councilmember Smedley.
My question was already answered. It was asking if this was in line with the state, and it is. And I'm fully in support of these changes. Thanks for all your work, everybody.
Thank you. Yeah, just for just a moment of, if you'll indulge me, adding this portion in about an individual communicating has actually come up in court where the judge has worn a mask, but then sometimes people in the gallery are unable to understand him. And it's really important in some situations that people are able, we're certain they understand legal instructions, for instance. And so this gives a little bit of latitude for those situations, as well as individuals who just may need to be able to read lips or to see the face of someone to clearly understand in other sections.
Are there other questions or comments on this amendment before we vote? Okay. All right, we have a motion and second for amending ordinance 8420. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nay.
Okay, the motion that ordinance has been amended and read for the first time.
President Nisley, I would like to make a motion that we suspend the rules to adopt, to allow us to consider adopting. Am I doing this in the right order?
You are.
Okay, thank you. Because of the timeliness of this, our numbers are changing rapidly. And I think the faster we can put this in place, the better it will be for our community.
Yep, okay.
Okay, so we have a motion to suspend. And I'm sorry, who indicated seconding? Councilmember Claude Filter. Okay, seconded. And do we have a motion and second to suspend? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay.
The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Grace.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 8420. And if desired, I will read the, not the long list of whereas's, but the relevant sections, if that would help for everyone for clarity.
I think it would. And we have Councilmember Fall seconded this.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Okay, just, I will read two whereas's because they are, the reason that I asked, and I believe everyone supported the suspension. And that is whereas on July 13th, 2020, the CDC reported 3,296,599 cases of COVID-19 in the United States resulting in... Oh, I think there's a typo in our number there. I hadn't clarified it, Debbie. I apologize. I hadn't caught that. Do you have the number? Oh, no, sorry. 134,884 deaths. Sorry. I was thinking that was my old number. I apologize. I've been looking at this a lot. So resulting in 134,884 deaths. And whereas on July 13th, 2020, Athens County now has six times as many total cases as two weeks ago and nearly 22 times as many active cases, endangering the lives of the citizens of Athens and creating an emergency to life and public safety and disrupting commerce. And now I will skip to the language to be codified. And this is that we will be adding to Section 9, to Chapter 911, Section 10, Face Coverings in Public Spaces, to read as follows. All individuals within the city of Athens shall wear a face covering over the individual's nose, mouth, and chin in accordance with the following: When entering, exiting, or waiting in line to enter a place of business that is open to the public and while inside a place of business within the areas of the business that are accessible to and intended for the use of the public. When entering, exiting, or waiting in line to enter a city of Athens-operated building or facility that is open to the public and while inside a city of Athens-operated building or facility within the areas of such city of Athens facility that are accessible to and intended for the use of the public. In any public transportation, such as a bus or other public transit vehicle, a taxi or ride-sharing vehicle, any other vehicle for hire, or at a transit stop or waiting area for any public transportation. In any outdoor space where or when a person is unable to maintain or does not maintain physical separation of more than six feet from others who are not members of their own household. B, the requirement to wear a face covering through this ordinance does not apply to the following. An individual with a medical condition, including those with respiratory conditions that restrict breathing, mental health conditions, a disability contraindicates the wearing of a facial covering. The individual is communicating or seeking to communicate with someone who is hearing impaired or has another disability where the ability to read the mouth is essential for communication. Two, children under 10 years old. Three, restaurant and bar patrons while eating or drinking. If a patron is not seated at his or her table or at the bar, a face covering is required. School and childcare centers, including students, administrators, and teachers, on or in school or childcare center facilities in order to follow the regulations and guidelines promulgated by their governing bodies and the Ohio Department of Education. For this ordinance, schools or childcare centers means any public or private institution that provides education or supervision for children of any age from birth up to and including kindergarten through post-secondary education. Five, in settings where it is not practicable or feasible to wear a facial covering, such as when receiving dental services, medical treatments, or while swimming. Six, walking or exercising outdoors so long as physical separation of more than six feet is maintained or while walking or exercising outdoors with other members of the same household. While engaged in exercising in a gym or other similar indoor facility so long as physical separation of more than six feet is maintained and the individual wears a face covering at all times when not engaged in exercising. When individuals are alone or able to maintain a physical separation of more than six feet in their work office, conference room, or other workspace not intended for use by the general public. Nine, when inside a personal or commercial vehicle, either parked or moving that is not a vehicle, described in Section A3. Ten, individuals while acting in their official capacity as a public safety employee or emergency responder when wearing a face covering would interfere with or limit their ability to carry out their official duties or functions. These include peace officers, firefighters, and other public safety or emergency medical personnel that support public safety operations. Individuals complying with the directions of public safety employees or emergency responders as described in Section B10. An individual completing a task who would be out of compliance with industry safety standards like NEC, OSHA, NFPA, et cetera. And thirteen, an individual who is an officiant of a religious service. And under definitions, we have the definition of a face covering, which means a piece of tightly woven cloth, fabric, or other material that fully covers the mouth, nose, and chin, and that is secured with ear straps or otherwise secured so as to prevent slipping. A face covering may be factory-made or may be handmade and improvised from household materials. Face coverings include, but are not limited to, bandanas, scarves, medical masks, and cloth masks. And also includes respirators, N95 masks, or other personal protective equipment that provides a higher level of protection than a face covering defined in this section. A face covering shall be worn so as to cover the nose, mouth, and chin in compliance with the CDC's guidance on wearing face coverings. Place of business means any facility, building, or structure operated by or for a business engaged in the sale or other transaction of any kind for anything of value in exchange for goods, commodities, services, or temporary lodging, and that is open to the general public or by appointment, and includes, but is not limited to, grocery stores, retail stores, pharmacies, healthcare facilities, restaurants and bars, including outdoor areas for such facilities, hotels and motels, excluding the rented room or suite, gyms and similar facilities. D, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is for any reason held to be invalid or unconstitutional by a decision of any court of competent jurisdiction, such decision shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of the ordinance, and clauses of this ordinance are declared to be severable. E, any violation of this section shall be considered an administrative offense requiring a fine of $100 payable to the city of Athens through the Athens City Police Department. Any person cited with a violation of this ordinance who wishes to appeal the violation shall visit the Athens City Police Department and request that an appeal be set before the appeals board established for this purpose by the Athens City County Health Department. The decision of the appeals board shall be final. Any person cited with a violation of this ordinance who does not request an appeal or pay the required administrative fine within 30 days shall receive a minor misdemeanor citation into Athens County Municipal Court. And the final section of the ordinance declares that it is an emergency measure necessary for the health, welfare, and safety of the residents of the city of Athens, and it shall be in full force and effect upon its passage and approval by the mayor, and it shall remain in effect during the pendency of State of Ohio Executive Order 2020-0ID.
Thank you. So we have the motion and second for approval of this ordinance. Are there, and I'd like to gather comments, questions from council members and the mayor. So starting with council, Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Great, for all your information before the meeting that the mayor brought. And also, Sarah, for doing all that you've been doing for this particular ordinance. I have like three general questions, three general ideas. One, there's been a lot of discussion about problems in bars. If my, I would think that at this point that if there was a health issue, such as a COVID outbreak in a bar, they would be under Health Department rules just like somebody got food poisoning or something that would go in and look at things and probably close them down. So that's a tool that I don't know was talked about last week or not. So that's a possibility. The second thing is, I want to say, because I've heard so many people talk about this, that at this point in the whole pandemic, how thoroughly betrayed a lot of people feel about how things have gone forward from national leadership and stuff. Personally, I'm pissed that all the work that our community did in April, March and April and May, sacrificing jobs and pay and everything that we did is now out the window because people cannot abide and look at the science. And so I'm personally really pissed about that whole thing. I think that this is way overdue. And I think that it's probably going to be followed by other things because we have not gotten a handle on the national picture of it. And it's sad. And I apologize to the people of Athens that their elected leaders have failed. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Claude Filter?
I have a comment and then just a question that occurred to me as that information was being read again that I had not thought of earlier. First, I really do want to thank Member Grace and President Nisley and Law Director Eliason and anyone else who has worked very hard on this. I think it's absolutely essential that we do this. And hopefully, it's going to save lives and save a lot of people from suffering. So hopefully, this will make our community much safer. At least, that's what I'm hoping for. One small question. As you were reading through the places, the kinds of, sort of the categories of places where people do need to wear masks, with the wording as it is, would that include the U.S. Post Office? Would that be excluded? Could anyone make the argument, oh, I don't have to wear it here because, you know, it's not a city of Athens office. It's not a business. Would it include state offices? The forestry office on East State Street? Or, I mean, do we need to have any language in there pertaining to government offices at other levels of government?
I'll answer that.
And I'm sorry to speak again, but would it affect the county offices? Could someone go into the county treasurer's office or the county commissioner's office and refuse to wear a mask?
I think Director Eliason can help us with that. Thank you.
Let's start at the county level. The county controls their buildings, and it would be up to them, I believe it would be up to the county commissioners to make the decision on wearing masks in their building and who can come in their building and who can't come in their building. As we talked about last week, Ohio University property, we don't have any control over state property. And the same for the federal post office. We wouldn't have any control over the property there, just as we wouldn't have control over the fairgrounds, as we talked about last week. That's a political subdivision in and of itself. So the answer would be we have to look directly at our ordinance and what it states as far as the application. That would be within the city of Athens where there isn't another control, like county, state, federal.
Thank you. And Councilmember Claude Filter, did you have one other comment or question related to that?
No, that covered the two that I had. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'm just curious, have there been discussions with leaders at Ohio University or the county commissioners about enacting any sort of similar rules? And I don't know if the mayor or President Nisley can answer that question?
The university is working on requirements and will soon have a press release. This is based on some information that the governor issued to the higher ed last week. And so we are waiting to hear that, to see those documents. They have been making some plans, I know, for, I think, requiring masks in the classrooms. And in, that much I'm sure of. And I know that they are working on it. Mayor Patterson, do you have any other information more specific than that at this point?
No, I think you summarized what Ohio University is working on. And they also are working on their path forward when it comes to infractions on campus and that they would go through the student judicial, through their process. But that's the only thing I can share at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fall.
Since we're kind of sharing information, I've had, you know, a lot of people become very concerned about the fraternities and what sort of safety precautions that fraternities, sororities are going to be able, are going to be required to do, and how are we going to deal with the annexes that have sometimes more than 10 people join at their abode? Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for sharing that. Councilmember Katsas? And then Councilmember Smedley after Katsas.
President Nisley, thank you. And thank you, everyone, for putting the work in that goes to administration, Member Grace, and anybody else that has been participating in this conversation. And so, you know, I see this as, you know, we're not going to see 100% compliance, but setting an expectation allows us to maybe see the type of behavior that we would like to see during this time. And I think it's imperative. I don't believe we have 100% of people wearing their seatbelts, but there are laws about that. I know that we've placed, you know, requirements on driving the speed of 25 miles per hour on East State Street. And I know that not everybody is hitting that number. on East State Street, and I know that not everybody is hitting that number, but if you don't set the tone, there's a good chance you'll never achieve what, what you would like to see. So, so, so thank you, and thank you for the speed of this, this process, because I do believe that time is of the essence. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Smedley?
Just want to agree with my fellow council members and thank everyone who has worked so hard on getting this together so quickly. This was a highly recommended practice for a long time, recommended by people who know what they're talking about, their health professionals, medical professionals, public health officials. But we, we're not seeing the behavior that we needed to see, and we, the numbers reflect that. So now it's time for something like this. So thank you, everybody.
Okay. Thanks. Councilmember Reisner?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I guess I'm the last council member to talk on it. Um, I just want to say again, as everyone else has already said, thanks a lot to Councilmember Grace and others for putting all this together. I can see it was an awful lot of hard work. And it's a fairly thankless job to do, but thanks. And I, I'm going to vote in favor of this. I'm satisfied with the ordinance. Uh, it's not perfect, but then again, we don't live in a perfect world. I'm satisfied with the science behind it. A lot of people won't agree with it, but I think those in the know do. So I'm going to go along with that. I've been a scientist most of my life. I'm a computer modeler by trade. I know statistics. I'm satisfied with the data and what it's telling us. So I really think it's time that we vote on this and get it behind us. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Claude Felter?
Uh, let me just state that I also plan to vote in favor of this. Uh, I've seen a lot of comments on Facebook saying that it's, the, the ordinance should be even stronger, especially about bars and restaurants. But it's unfortunate that we're a statutory city so that we can't strengthen this more than the state's, uh, the state's bills. So we've, um, you know, the people who've worked hard on this, and again, I thank you for your work, have made it as strong as we can do here in Athens because we're a statutory city. And even though it isn't perfect, um, and I would like to see it even stronger, I hope that it is already strong enough that it's, um, going, going to keep people safe, going to prevent them from suffering. Hopefully, it's going to prevent anyone from dying. And, um, I just hope that a lot of people will in fact comply so that we can, we can prevent the chance from making each other sick and just keep our community members and our friends and neighbors safer. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Now, we do have a few questions that, uh, one of which is a question from the public asking, have we looked at the science from all angles? And I know there has been some correspondence, uh, looking at the different test results. Councilmember Grace has been, uh, looking at some of the, the articles, as has the mayor. And if you would want to, Sarah, perhaps address, Councilmember Grace, address that briefly, and then I'll try and respond briefly to the other public concerns about the revenues and the citations after that.
Certainly. So regarding the science, um, I, I really appreciate Member Reisner's comment. And I, my education background is in science also, but from a different perspective. Um, I, I have a bachelor's degree in biology. I've studied virology, bacterial, bacteriology, infectious diseases, and I have a master's degree in public health. I, I've read hundreds, hundreds of research articles, and I, I am convinced that, that the science is sound on this. And even, even from the totally lay perspective of a mother who has four children and has wiped their faces many times, having a cloth covering someone's face catches some of the germs that will be expelled through talking, singing, laughing, coughing, sneezing. If the face and mouth are covered, it is going to catch some of the respiratory droplets, and those are the things that carry some of the infectious agents. And we, we know, um, those respiratory droplets carry the virus, um, in, in this particular pandemic. And so to me, it, it has been said several times, this isn't perfect. We know this is not going to suddenly stop all transmission. This is one of several steps, and I encourage everyone, maintain social distancing. Don't, don't gather in large groups. Stay with, with people within your household or with a small quarantine, and, um, don't, don't go to public spaces more than necessary. Wash your hands, wash your hands, wash your hands. Um, but a face covering is one of the tools that is available to us that, um, that makes a difference, and, and I, I am fully convinced of that.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Grace. We have had some questions, uh, two questions posed about the specific accounts that the revenue might go to from the citations, and as I understand the discussion, that would go into the General Revenue Fund. They do make a, a comment, though, that if monies come in, could they be directed to directly be related to promote public health and safety? So, um, thank you for that comment from the public. Uh, and then there was another question about the citations, and there is, um, an appeal process for the, if there is a citation issued, and we have detailed that. So, um, we have, we have that set up, and that the appeal process will be monitored or coordinated through the Ohio Department of, excuse me, the Athens City County Health Department, Dr. Gaskill and two of his appointees. So, um, I think that I have gone through these questions, and I want to now move to give an opportunity for others who have been waiting here to make comments, members of the public who have been viewing here. Excuse me, uh, Councilmember Grace, did you have another comment?
Another question just popped up. Will individuals be allowed to work off fines and related court costs with respect to a masked ordinance citation through community service? I know that fines can be worked off through community service. Um, I, I wanted to see if Law Director Eliason can have some clarification on that.
The fines can be, but it's up to the judge as far as the court costs. It's, court costs are rarely waived, but by the time it gets to that point, the person would have had to either appeal or fail to pay the administrative fine. Now, the first step of this is administrative.
Right. Thank you. I just wanted clarification on that.
Thank you. Okay. And do we have comments, any comments or questions from the public that we might not have answered? It doesn't look like there's anyone doing that now, is what our government channel director is saying, that there's no one raising their hands to ask to speak. Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 8420. All those in favor, si, no, wait, Councilmember Fall, did you have another comment? You need to unmute, please. Councilmember Fall?
Well, somebody's there. Brendan Moran is on my screen.
Pardon me? The what?
Brendan Moran is on the screen down here. I don't know if anybody else can-
Oh, got it. Thank you. Thank you very much. And the other thing I wanted to do before we move to that, I am sorry, Mayor Patterson? How could we forget? You're sitting right there. So before, we always go through council members first and then other elected officials, and, uh-
President Nisley, I'd be happy to speak last if Mr. Moran wants to speak.
Uh-
It's a question.
Okay. Um, why, we can go ahead with Mr. Moran then. Okay. And Mr. Moran, if you could, uh, give us your full name, address, uh, and then you'll have three minutes, and I will time that.
Okay. My name is Brendan Moran. I live at 191 West State. Uh, my question pertains to, uh, the, the effect of this, this ordinance is to curb the spread of COVID-19 in Athens. I'm wondering, uh, why they, if this is the, the effect is to curb COVID-19, um, is there going to be any discussion about limiting arrests for nonviolent crimes? Because it has been shown that, uh, the jail system is a huge source of COVID-19, um, new cases in America in different, uh, different states around the country. And so I, I just want to, I want you all to understand that and to think carefully about this, about putting nonviolent offenders into a jail for a few days or might be posted there until they can post bail. Most of the time, these people are poor, um, and they're being jailed, uh, you know, basically because they're poor and can't afford to post bail. So this is something that I really think that everyone needs to think carefully about if you really want to curb the spread of COVID-19. We have to address this issue.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Moran, for joining us tonight and, and waiting, and we appreciate the comments. Okay. Uh, Mayor Patterson, thank you for waiting.
Anytime. Thank you, President Nisley and council. I'll be brief. I had a share screen graph that I was going to show, but I think I can encapsulate it verbally as opposed to showing you another graphic, and that is that, um, over the, since March 26th, when we experienced our first case here in Athens County, um, up to, uh, 99 days later, basically up to, to, uh, June 30th, uh, and I can take that back up to June 20, uh, July 2nd, uh, we had experienced 43 cases over that 99-day period of time. And since then, in the, within the past 10 days, and the reason I'm using past 10 days or starting with July 3rd up till the present is because it was July 3rd that I received from Mayor Nan Whaley in Dayton their piece of legislation so that we could look to see if that was something that could be explored here in the City of Athens to where, to which has brought us to where we are right now. During that 10-day period of time, we have experienced 149 additional cases, um, to what we're experiencing. So, you know, we're in a period to where we're seeing not linear anymore, but exponential growth, uh, increases in cases. And something else is worth mentioning, I mentioned this last Friday, I'm going to mention it again now, we're currently sitting at 36 cases that are recovered, so 36 individuals who have recovered versus 50, 153 active cases throughout Athens County. Um, I have to give, um, high praise to the Athens City County Health Department for the work that they have been doing, the level of contact tracing that they have to do when they are working through, even if we just look at the 28 cases on Saturday, the 28 cases on Sunday, and the 24 cases today, um, they have to go out and look to see, um, everybody that that, those individuals may have come in contact with, and as you can imagine, in a lot of cases, it can be, um, multiple people to, in some cases, dozens of people that they have been in contact with. So I, I wanted to recognize the work that they are doing. Um, they're doing an outstanding job. But again, I also want to stress the, the importance of getting something in, in place, and all of you have mentioned this in one way or another, and that is that this is one of multiple things that everybody should be doing. Everybody should be masking up, face coverings, everybody should be practicing proper social distancing of six feet or greater, uh, and certainly the washing of hands multiple times or using sanitizer. But, um, I, uh, I am, am truly believing that this is the, this is the best thing that we can be doing for our community now, moving forward, so that we can, uh, at least start to bend this curve, because right now, as I said, we're in exponential growth. We're not in linear growth anymore.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I might respond, there have been two other comments on Facebook, one about the policing of groups greater than 10, um, and then, and that is a previous order, Mayor, that you issued, and yes, that is being enforced by the police department, and, um, uh, and I think I would respond to the other comment that we will do everything in our power to make sure that we are enforcing this law, um, this face covering law, and it is complaint-based. I do want to make that clear, um, and that the police will be doing that and enforcing it in a fair and equitable manner. Um, okay. Any other comments or questions? If not, then, um, we do have the motion and second for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, the motion carries and the ordinance is approved. It will be effective, um, immediately upon signing. So thank you all very much.
Take a good look at masks, Jeff.
Yes. Nice touch, Jeff.
Very nice.
You can't have it.
I have one like that, too.
Oh.
I like it.
We'll now move on to ordinance 8520, and ordinance amending the 2020 appropriation ordinance, and this is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 08520.
Second.
And the reason being that-
I'm sorry, the reason being is that this is for coronavirus relief funds that we need to expedite as soon as possible.
Great. We have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been, the rules have been suspended. Councilmember Crowell?
Uh, thank you, President Nisley. I'll go ahead and read through this ordinance. Uh, this is an ordinance, uh, in, in separate legislation, we've already, uh, included the CARES Act from which we will be receiving or have received, um, some funds, uh, for coronavirus relief, and, uh, this is just an appropriation to have the money available in those funds so that, um, employees can begin to write requisitions for virus-related expenses using the appropriate account numbers. Uh, so Section 1, the 2020 Appropriation Ordinance 13019, is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $100,000 to Coronavirus Relief Fund 285.120, transaction codes 200 to 300, and $200,000 to Coronavirus Relief Fund 285.120, transaction code 500, and $160,627.98 to Coronavirus Relief Fund 285.120, transaction code 600, and increasing the total appropriations by said amounts. Thank you, President-
And that was a motion to approve, correct?
And most, I'd like to make a motion to approve, 08-
A second, please?
Second.
Councilmember Reisner? Okay, we have a motion and second for approval, and is there any discussion, or does anybody have any questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Approval by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, the motion carries and the ordinance is approved. The next item of business is adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Councilmember Fall, seconded by Councilmember Grace. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Okay, we, we are adjourned at 7:52. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, everybody. I think this is a really beneficial thing that we've done.
Yep. Wear your mask.